This training is evaluating school board decision making. So we can go to the next slide and I just want to go over what First State Educates Mission and Vision is. So our mission is to empower Delawareans to engage in local level decision making, which is what a school board does, that directly impacts school governance, catalyzing community involvement to drive improvement in student outcomes. So everything we do, we're thinking about how we're going to improve student outcomes. And then our vision is that Delaware is where citizens are actively shaping school governance. So the engagement from our community, driving data informed decisions that ensure all students have access to an education that prepares them for a productive and fulfilling life. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So why are we here tonight? We're here tonight to create a space for collaborative problem solving. Collaboration is the only way to solve problems and that's a key ingredient when you're on a school board. Can you guys put yourselves on mute because I feel like I'm echoing if you don't mind?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. And you can just unmute when I ask questions because I will ask questions. So very important collaboration with a school board because there should be collaboration between the community and the school board members and there should be collaboration with families, with staff, with students. So it's a very important thing to think about collaborative problem solving. We also are, you know, we're here tonight to talk about transparency. So there should be, obviously there are laws around this, but we want to promote transparency and mutual understanding by bringing different perspectives, diverse perspectives to the table and have a conversation about things. So not just the seven or five people that are sitting on a school board, but we want everyone to come in and have different perspectives because somebody taught me this about five years ago and I think it's a really profound statement. Listen to learn rather than listening to respond. And that's a key ingredient when you want to be a school board member because you got to be a good listener. We want to encourage joint exploration of solutions. So what is the solution? There could be many different answers to that question, right? It's not just one answer. And so exploring the different ways and different solutions to address the challenges within our school system. And we want to foster partnerships that lead to actionable steps for improving student outcomes and enhancing school governance. There's nothing more important than partnerships and coalition partners when you're doing this work because everybody brings a unique set of skills to the table and then that just makes you a stronger board, right? And then we also always, always will support open dialogue on critical topics. We want to hear what everybody has to say about the critical things that our students are facing and allowing both the community and board members to contribute their insights and ideas. So it's not just the school board tapped down, it's a grassroots approach. What is the community saying? What is, what are the families saying? What is the student saying? So those are very important things and that's why we're here today. So we're going to go to the next slide. So this is where now you can unmute. So what are some ways you might evaluate your local school board? What would be something you would look for? I'd love to hear from both of you.
I'm looking for diversity, representation or student representation on the board. Conversation and what conversations, I wouldn't say I'm looking for conversations, but I'm listening for conversations and the type of dialogue that's occurring. Are they crucial? Are they culturally sensitive or culturally leading? Are they mindful of different policies or transition and care? I'm also looking for experience and wisdom and so I think that's important. So that way you're getting that, you're getting the scope of a perspective, but coming from a background of experience, not necessarily in education, but just knowledge of either the system itself, the institution, or maybe perhaps the experiences from a different lens, like a social worker and they don't even work with the school system, but they can provide the understanding of what mental health can look like or, or just for different perspectives. I guess that goes back to the diversity piece.
Lorraine?
That's what she said was really, really, really good. I guess, not knowing a lot about school boards, I guess I would look at like, well, what kind of issues are they working on? You know, what is, what is important? And, you know, have they, have they talked to, have they talked to the parents? Have they heard from students and how are they going to tackle some of those problems or issues that might arise?
Great. All, both of you have that great perspective. So we're going to go to the next slide, which I think is just the poll, the survey. We can go to the next slide. So one thing I want to remind you is that a school board meeting is a meeting held in the public. So there's no back and forth. The school board sits there, they have to have it in public. Every school board meeting must be held in public with a quorum present, right? If they want to make any decisions, take action. The only time they can go behind closed doors is, and that's called executive session, is when they're talking about personnel issues or legal things. So it's important to know that as we go through this presentation. But so tonight, our session overview, these are the things that we're going to be discussing. We're going to define criteria for evaluating school boards. So very important, what are you looking for when you're saying, is this school board member doing a good job? Is this school board member bringing something to the table? Is this school board member able to, you know, resolve a problem? Are they listening? All those things. And we're going to go through the different things that you should think about. So when someone's running, if it's an incumbent, you want to see, have they talked about student outcomes, right? And how do you evaluate actions that the board is taking? So they take action at every school board meeting. That's why they need a quorum. And so when they take action, are they evaluating something before they actually vote? Or are they just rubber stamping? And we're going to learn how to collect data on school board decision making. And then we're going to take a tour of a school district's website to learn where things can be found. So there's certain things that need to be posted on the district website prior to the meeting. So we're going to go through that as well. We're going to go to the next slide. So I want to talk about some definitions and these are things that you would be looking for when we go on that tour. So one is the agenda. An agenda obviously is a document. It's like the blueprint of the meeting. It's what the topics that will be discussed. So I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but an agenda must be posted on the district website prior to the meeting because the public needs to know what's on that agenda, especially if there are action items that are going to be voted on because there's laws around that. There's laws around, you know, listening to the public at the beginning of the meeting so they can comment on the action item. An action item, that's like a clearly written task and action that's going to happen and they vote on it, right? It's, an action item usually has, this is what I, you know, I moved to da, 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 da. And then it has a rationale. So all school boards or any other governance bodies always follow Robert's Rules of Order. And part of that is once somebody makes a motion, they need a second and then they go into a discussion. But before the discussion, the maker of the motion, the person that is putting the motion forward gets an opportunity to talk about their rationale and that's the why. Why do you need this? And of course, discussion refers to the specific topic that is requiring input. So that's where, is there any discussion? You want, you're talking with each other, you're collaborating, you're listening to what your school, your fellow school board members are saying. Policies, those are a set of ideas and it's based on decision making. So policies are made and there's policies and procedures that every school board has to follow. They all have a policy manual and those policies should be updated on a regular basis. And the policies also, they can bring new policy. It's part of one of the biggest jobs that a school board does is bringing policy to the district. And then voting, obviously it's the formal action that you're taking to approve the action item or whatever it is that you're, you're having, you're voting on. Now, a vote can be done in a number of ways. You can do a voice vote, which most school board members, school boards do. So you have a secretary and they'll do a roll call and they'll say, call each member of the school board's name and they'll say yes, no, or abstain. And I'm not a big fan of abstentions, but sometimes people have a conflict of interest and then they, that might be a reason for abstaining, but otherwise people should not abstain. Okay, we can go to the next slide. And I'll take questions at the end so we can get through the slides and then we'll leave some time for some questions. So common actions that should take place at school board meetings. This should happen in every school board meeting. Well, obviously we want all the school board members that have been voted into these roles, elected by the community to attend the meeting. They're once a month. Now they do have special meetings or they have workshops, but school board members have been elected and trust has been put upon them by their community and they should attend. And when they attend, they should be prepared and you can tell when someone's been prepared or not. Now, just because someone asks a lot of questions doesn't mean that they're not prepared. But if they're asking or saying things that were clearly laid out prior to getting to that meeting, then you know they weren't prepared. And that's really important. You can't come into a school board meeting, they used to send a packet home with every school, it was mailed or delivered to the home and it was like this large and they would have to read through. Of course, those were back in the old days, right? Now they have something called board docs, which I'm going to show you when we do the walkthrough. And they're all of the information that is connected to any action they're going to take is all loaded onto board docs. And that is the area of the, of the website that it only, the school board has access to. So the public has access to the agenda, how to sign up to make a public comment, and obviously the meeting notice. Transparency in decision making is a very important thing to look at when you're judging to see how a school board member is doing their job. They have to follow open meeting laws. And so that means that they have to engage in nonpartisan governance, which I know is extremely challenging in today's world, but it is a nonpartisan group. You can't bring politics, and I know politics gets thrown into school boards, but you really, as a school board member, they have to stay focused on the most important thing. What do you think that most important thing is? I mean, anyone can raise their hand and tell me what they think.
I think the most important thing is what is going to be good for the student? What is the outcome going to be for the student?
That is correct. You hit it right on the nose. Most important thing is that we have good student outcomes. And then each school board member should be contributing to those discussions. They shouldn't sit there and look at their phone or be on their iPad or, you know, staring into space. They should be in active discussion. They should ask questions, they should make comments. Everybody should be participating in the conversation. That's how the collaboration happens and that shows you that they're engaged in the work. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So here's some data that you can use to evaluate your school board's decision making. Well, first of all, data, data and every decision should be data informed. So if you're making decisions about a student performance or financial reports, that's actual data, data that they can look at and then they can make a decision. So for example, if they see that students are not reading at the third grade reading level, that's a, there's data that's showing 22% of the students in third grade are reading at grade level. That's very problematic and that's data they can use to offer solutions of how they can change that because that's their job. And you also can look and see, are they making decisions based that way? So when you're at the school board meeting. Another thing to evaluate a school board is how are they voting? Is everybody just voting yes? Is there, is it just a rubber stamp, rubber stamp, we're out of there in 45 minutes? Or is there really robust discussion and good questions asked? That's important. Does the board work as a unit? Are they working together cohesively? Because yes, there's going to be differences of opinion, but that's good because it brings different perspectives to the table. But each person should respect, even if they don't agree. And we all know that there's been some school boards with some dysfunction and that's because they're not listening to each other. They're just talking over one another. So respect and being really intentional to try to reach a consensus. You might not agree with a vote, but when you leave that board as a board member, you need to be in the public, they have to be unified in the public. You know, you can't say, oh, I voted against that, so I'm not supporting it. Because that's what a board is. They, they're supposed to be a consensus. They should build consensus and when they come together, they should agree that this is the decision that was voted on, so we support that. So these are all things that when you're going to a school board meeting, you can, you can evaluate how your school board is doing. We can go to the next slide. So some key takeaways the public should be measuring. So does your school board participate in professional development? Are they getting constant training? Because to me, professional development is an evolving thing and everybody could always use more of it. Training, of course, resources are, you know, grow as we go from year to year and there's always new information and new things that are being focusing on. You know, 10 years ago, maybe we were more focused on chronic absenteeism, not that that has really changed much, but in today's day and age, we're really focused on student safety. Are kids safe in schools, right? So things evolve and that requires for the school board to participate in professional development and training, governance training, so that they can be on top of issues and understand how to work with the public to come up with solutions, right? Tracking the participation in governance training and the willingness of the school board to do that about education best practices is very important. Are they responding to the community's concerns? A school board is elected by their community, families, community members, staff, students, as long as they're over 18. And it's very important that when they, you email a school board member, they respond to you. They might not have all the answers, but they should still say, I don't have an answer, I'll get back to you. But to ignore a constituent is wrong and that's another way to measure them. Are they responsive? Okay, we can go to the next slide. So scoring your local school board member's performance. So these are just some things that if you were going to measure them on sort of a scorecard, what you would think about. So superintendent oversight. So one of the biggest roles a school board member is responsible for is to hire, fire, and evaluate. That's a key thing. Evaluate the school superintendent. I'm to light a few years ago that some school districts hadn't evaluated their superintendents in 10 years. That's not fair to the superintendent. It's not fair to the people that they serve because people need to know how their district leader is doing. Are they meeting the criteria that the school board has given them or the benchmarks, right? And that's very important. Now, obviously you're not going to hear the results of meaning the superintendent when they get their evaluation, but there's going to be some type of vote to accept the evaluation and whatever's going to happen and renew the contract, whatever it is. If you're not hearing that, that's a problem because it should, a contract shouldn't be renewed without some kind of evaluation. It's not fair to either party. Policy impact. Is your school board bringing new policies to the board to be voted on? And there's a process according to policy manuals about how that should happen. Are you hearing about a policy and then it's voted on right away? Because that's not right. It should be a first read, a second read, and then a vote so that they can get input from the community on the policy. There's also, most districts have committees, different committees, and there's a policy committee. There's, that should be filled with not just district people, but community people, parents, maybe a student. And so these policies that they make should always have these things in mind. Is it equitable? Is it based on school performance? Is it, are the actions that they're taking leading to policies that improve student outcomes? Those are really important things to think about. Strategic alignment. So you can think about looking at whether the school board is supporting the mission because every school district has a mission, the strategic plan. There should be a strategic plan posted on every website and a strategic plan, just as a reminder, is the blueprint of the school district. It's what, it's the goals. It's what they're going to accomplish. Some of them have three years, some of them have five years. It shouldn't probably be more than five years. Some maybe have two years, but that conversations should be happening about aligned to that strategic plan because that strategic plan was initially voted and approved by the school board in public. So it is like the blueprint. Are they meeting the goals of that strategic plan? So it's another thing you can think about when you're evaluating the school board. Are students improving? You should look at these test scores. Where were they, you know, this year and then where they are the next year? Because even if students are reading, at a 35%, of them are reading at third grade level, right? But the next year, 45% are. It's not where we want to be, but it's getting, it's going in the right direction. And that's the kind of thing you want to think about. And that's with everything, graduation rates. Are the academic indicators showing that there's an improvement? Because if there's growth and improvement, then, then their focus must be, you know, is on improving student achievement. But if it's not, then if they're not, it's not, if they don't talk about student outcomes and how students are doing during a school board meeting, then I don't know how they're really focusing on student outcomes. Because every decision that's made should be focused on, at the end of the day, improving student achievement. Budgets are very important. Are resources being allocated appropriately? Because if they're spending money, and this is all done in public, as a matter of fact, every school district has a financial oversight committee that should have community members and school board, uh, school board members and, and parents on it, right? If they're spending money, you know, only have one pot of money. Where is that money going? Is it going to improve student outcomes? Is it going to help support the classrooms, help support teachers? Or is it going towards, you know, buying pens? And I'm not saying they don't need pens, but there's a balance here and there should be a conversation going on during the school board meeting to say where these resources are allocated. The chief financial officer of the school district usually does a report and talks about, you know, there was a CFO that worked in Red Clay. She was amazing. She's in Brandywine now. And she used to make this chart and you would see where the money would go. It was a color chart, like a pie chart. And it was so helpful because regardless of what everyone thinks, about 82 to 85% of a district's budget goes to personnel. And people just, personnel costs a lot of money, salaries, benefits, this, that, and the other. And so there's only that small other pot, right? Now, of course, paying teachers and administrators helps improve student outcomes also. So it's important to know and understand how that works so that you can think about it strategically. And are they considering roles in supporting new programs? Like is it always like, no, we don't want to do anything different? No, we don't want any change. That's not good because we all need change and we all have to be open minded. And so that's another way that you can be measuring what they're doing. If it's enhancing student learning and the wellbeing of students, like the student climate is, if it's helping with anything like that, then that, that's innovative, that's important. But if they're just doing the same thing from year to year, nothing will change and the school board needs to challenge that because the school board doesn't run the district. Superintendent does. But the school board is the governing body that oversees the superintendent in the sense that that's the person, they have one employee, superintendent. We're going to go to the next slide. So, okay, now I'm going to take you through to, hold on, I gotta go to the, allow multiple presenters to share, okay? I'm going to go to the website. Of course, you never have it when you want it. Hold on a minute. Okay, why can't I, can you see my screen? No, okay. I'm so bad at this.
It says walkthrough, unmute, I'm sorry, but I can see your screen.
Okay, I'm trying to get to Red Clay's website. Okay, so can you see this?
Yes.
All right. So I'm going to use Red Clay because I'm really familiar with it and it'll be easier for me to take you through this walkthrough. So you click on here and.
Von, you need to share.
I am sharing. I am sharing.
It's not showing for us.
Lorraine, can you see my screen?
I can see it as well.
Yeah, it's the Red Clay website I see.
It might be because you and I are both, are both hosts. Okay, so here's about Red Clay, you go to the Board of Education. Okay, so on every school, and this is something First State Educate really, really asked all the school superintendents to do about three years ago. Every single school board member should have their picture, what the, who they nominate, you know, if they're the board president, whatever, their nominating district. Now I will say, in Newcastle County, except for Apo, there are seven board members and they all have nominating districts. In Apo is five school board members and they are at large, they can live anywhere. So these are all, like if you click on Jose, you would get his bio and all that. So that's very important. So you would go to meetings because this is what we're focusing on right now. So here's board docs and it's, see, this is what I was referring to earlier. And look, it gives you the agendas for executive session because, you know, tonight there's a meeting and then there's a regular session. And all of these things are on here, there's this exec, a special executive session. Here's the board handbook and that just has all the rules and regulations around the school board. They go back really far, you can get all of these. Then when you're in, if I clicked on here, which is today's meeting, you can view the agenda and you can print it or download it. You can view the minutes from the last meeting. So see how this all is? And every school district has these things on their webs. They all use board docs, I believe, in Delaware. And here's where you can find the policies and so you can look at that. Again, here's the agenda. And then you could see how I mentioned before, these are the different things that are happening. See, there's my name, I was in public comment. Not every school district does something like this as far as public comment goes. I love that they do this because you can see everyone who is making public comment that night and it gets listed on, like it's, it's posted up on, on the stage when, behind them. And then you know when it's your time to speak. Then there's the superintendent's report. It's another thing that should be part of every school board meeting that the superintendent gives some report. Then here are the action items, then they have consent items. And then each, remember earlier I mentioned that the school districts have committees? Each of these districts, each of these committees are here and they are, they report out on them. And then here are the other things. Okay. Now, if you go to the meetings and that's here and you, you, I don't want to click on it because it's going to, but what will happen is when you hit view minutes, you can also see they have, it is a law in Delaware that every public school board and charter school digitally records their meetings. And if you click on this, and I can't do it while I'm sharing, then it will, you will get the recording. So you can go back and listen to the recording through the minutes. Because the link is right in there. Okay? All right. Thank you. Brudy, you can start sharing again. Thank you. Okay. This is just an oversight of what we just discussed. So I'm not going to go through all this again. We can go to the next slide. Really important on the websites that we do have is you, just every, every school district has a strategic plan and a budget that's posted on their website. So you can go on there and you can find all these things. And that's a really important thing to think about when you're thinking about who's sitting on your school board. Because if this isn't there, then you need to be able to contact someone and say, wait, why doesn't the strategic plan there? So there was a school district that didn't have a strategic plan, they hadn't proved it yet or when it wasn't on there. But then the next meeting, they approved it, their new one, and it got posted. So sometimes there could be an overlap of a month, but it shouldn't go longer than that because you've, you're going, you should be planning, if your strategic plan ends in 2025, for example, the school district should be talking about what their new strategic plan is now so that when 2025 ends, they have it ready to go. So this is not something you plan in a month. This is like a long, long-term goal because, you know, again, they need to get input from staff, from students. Because, you know, again, they need to get input from staff, from students, from parents, from families, from the community. You want everyone at the table. That, that's the part where we talked about earlier about being um, inclusive and cohesive. So that you have everyone's input. The budget is shared on the website and it just tells you. It's not the details of the budget, that's presented at the board meeting. But it does tell you what their overall budget is, how much they're spending, you know, on facilities, on. Um, you know, curriculum and all that. So it's like a, um, an overreaching. Um, breakdown of the budget. We can go to the next slide. Okay, so recording of school board meetings, as I mentioned earlier. Every school board is required, and this is not an if and or but, it is a law, they have to digitally record it. Ninety-five percent of our school boards are, have it posted the day, next day. So tomorrow, Red Clay's school board meeting will already, the link will be up and I'll listen to it. Because I go to every, all the school board meetings in Newcastle County, but sometimes like tonight, I have a comp, well, I, I might be done. It doesn't start till seven. And um, um, I have to go back and listen to it. It's really a good tool to have because even if you're at the meeting, they might have taken a vote and something went over your head. Or somebody said something and you couldn't remember what they said and you can go back and listen to it. Some of the meetings are very long and some of them are very short. And you don't have to, you could fast forward through it too. But if the link is always posted on the website. You can, you'll hear the discussions, you'll hear what, how they voted. And you'll be able to listen to public comment, which is great because you'll hear from the public what they're focusing on, what they want the school board to know about. That's what's great about public comment. Okay, we can go to the next slide. Okay, we're gonna do an activity, so. So I'm gonna read this, so. I wanna hear from all of you. So your local school board recently made a decision that has sparked questions from the public. Some community members support the decision while others feel that it was very rushed, unclear, and not well thought out. So a very, you know, quick decision, like I mentioned a few minutes ago. As an engaged community member, you want to evaluate how well the board handled the decision-making process. And whether school board members act in a way that reflects good governance, transparency, and accountability. So let's start with the first question. What information do you think you would need to fully understand the board's decision? You could unmute and just say. Lorraine?
Yeah, I'm thinking. Like, what kind of, um, what kind of, what kind of information do they have? What kind of questions do they ask? Do they understand um, the issue? Uh, how well do they understand it? And was there a discussion, I guess, about it before a decision was made?
Great, very good. Anyone else?
I would say, what background info, what, what's the content and or background decision that they used? To make that decision or policy that was driven to make that decision? Because I re, you said evidence base earlier, so I'm, I'm, I would wanna know, you know, what that was.
That's great. So what data do you think the school board should have reviewed before voting? Like, what kind of data do you think they should have?
Well, I mean, depending upon what the issue was, you know, they, they should have access to, like you pointed out earlier. Um, you know, test scores or um, charts. Or, you know, just information that um, might help with that decision-making.
Great.
And any type of data that they can, that, that is available to them, they should be reviewing before uh, voting on something.
Um, so what, who, what interested parties do you think should be involved in the decision-making process? Who do you think should be involved in a decision-making process before the school board actually votes on something?
The superintendent, I think.
Okay, anyone else?
Will that be parents? Could parents be involved in that?
Of course.
Yeah.
Students.
Yes. So basically, all interested parties should really be, if they can get them to the table to provide input. It's like what we talked about earlier about policymaking, right? You get, you get a, a broad view of different um, opinions and it's easier to make your decision and know that the decision is right. Um, if you were assessing the school board members, what would you look for in their discussions and their votes?
How well thought they were and considering all perspect, everything, just from a holistic lens. The student, the parent, the institution itself, just how well, how much they put into um, thinking about everything.
Great. Did you wanna add anything, Lorraine?
I guess, um, can, can you, I don't know, I mean, can you look at, like, if you wanna see how somebody voted? Like, is it somebody that just is like a yes person and doesn't really give any thought to it? I would wanna look at kind of that type of thing, like how, how they voted in the past. Um, you know, if they're always saying yes and then they're not giving much thought to uh, the issues at hand.
Great, I know, that's like rubber stamping everything.
Yeah, exa- exactly. Or asking or, you know, but, you know, whatever, but.
No, no, that's great. So if you were assessing school board members, what would you look like? What would you look for in their decisions and their votes? Like, what would you say if you were like assessing how a school board performed? What, what do you think should be in their discussions and their votes?
I was kinda just answering that question, I'm sorry, I was, I jumped down to that one.
No, no, that's, that's great. Oh, you're talking about because they shouldn't rubber stamp? Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, like, I would wanna look at, uh, you know, uh, how, how maybe they voted in the past, um. And I guess you could also, um, you could also go back and listen to some of the school board meetings. To listen to the discussions as well, right? Because. You know, look, look at their, their past discussions and, and see how they, how that thought process went for them.
Great.
I don't know, I feel like I would want to also have the previous policies or amended policies that were around that topic. Um, like i- in conjunction with, because I, I agree with Lorraine, wanting to just see. Or hear what, um, what has been said about it before. But then I guess also following through with reviewing the policies or um, budget maybe, depending. Because it, it'll, it, at least in the, the meetings I've atta- I've had a privilege of listening in on or, or, or attending. It always seems like budgets that tends to drive some of the decision-making. So I would, you know, I think about like just, just having a broaden, a broader scope of, but having policy in front of me before making that decision. I would wanna, I would want to see the school board members considering that.
Great. So um, what questions do you think school board members should ask before they're making a final decision?
That one's hard.
So maybe um, they would ask the superintendent, has, let's say, they're looking at math scores. Maybe the super, they would ask the superintendent, have we looked into why the math scores have um, dropped? Um, have we made changes in that department? Did we change curriculum? Like, something like that, or if you're making a budget decision and something is, uh, they overspent or something. Did something happen? Was there an emergency? Let's say a water main broke or the air conditioning failed or something like that. So those might be some good questions to ask, depending upon obviously what the decision is. So thinking really um, intentionally about what the subject is and how. That, so that they can make a really, you know, a, a, an appropriate dis- um, outcome decision. Um, so lastly, if you were a school board member, how would you approach the vote differently? Like, what would you do differently?
Is it possible to wait before answering? Does it, does a response, is the response required right then and there during the meeting?
So if they're doing a vote on something.
Oh, okay.
Usually, it's on the agenda to vote. And that's why, remember earlier, I mentioned to you, there should be several. Like reads of like a policy, for example, because it gives the board an opportunity to hear the first read. Then you get, you wait a month, you get input from, you know, the community and staff and things like that. And then there's a second read. So the board knows that the vote is coming. So maybe the board could have voted differently if they had asked questions before they got into the room, right? Instead of waiting and got into the room, because that's appropriate to, to um, ask questions prior. So that when they come in, that's also. Connected to being prepared, right? We talked about preparedness, right? So just a little exercise.
Do the work upfront before you actually get there to vote, yeah.
A thousand percent, exactly where I was going with that. Okay, uh, Bruna, we can go to the next slide. All right, so, ooh, um, our last question, so we're gonna have Q and A. But um, let me ask you a question. Do you feel that you are? Could possibly now feel more comfortable rating a school board on how their performance is? After this um, presentation? Do you feel like you know more? Do you feel like you know the same? Do you feel like you know less? Are you more confused? Just curious.
Um, I know more because of course this is new to me, so this is very helpful, very, very helpful about the process and what goes into it. So yeah, I, I feel pretty, pretty good about it.
Great.
Same for me as well, yes. I feel like I know more now from the pers- from. Um, the lens of looking at the board and, and then also maybe, yeah, I definitely know more now. Yeah, it's very helpful.
Awesome, awesome.